It's six o'clock, I'll take roll call now. Mr. Fuller Love? He's absent this evening. Mr. Dominic?
Here.
Mrs. Lyon?
Here.
Mr. Caver?
Here.
Mrs. DeBlak?
Here.
Mr. Helm?
Here.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yeah.
Let's begin.
We are the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, so we need to, a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So move. So move. Thank you.
A motion was made by Mr. Dominic, seconded by Mr. Helm, to adopt the agenda as presented. Mr. Dominic?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Caver?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mrs. Lyon?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBlak?
Yes.
Motion carried. Um, 4.0 recognition of members of the audience, we did not have anyone submit to speak this evening. So we shall move on to 4.02, the good news report.
We're gonna reverse the order just because of the way they're loaded in the computer, but, so we'll do the Tiger Talent first and then we will jump on to the good news report.
Tiger talent for this month is Rachel Wolshel, she's a math teacher here. She teaches civics for seventh graders, teaches seventh grade math, eighth grade math, Jackard Voltrails.
She also is in charge of our MTSS program, multi-tiered system for students.
First time we ever did it and she's jumped in two feet, regaining ground, making some strides what I wanted to do.
Ms. Wolshel is a really hard worker, she is someone who you see here a lot after school, making sure that she's taking care of everything that she possibly can.
Certain things come to mind, first, she was very helpful when I joined this staff here, preparing paperwork for me and, and we checked frequently over the first couple years of who was doing what, where we were and sharing material.
Walk into a room and you're probably gonna see a little bit of chaos. Kids are all over, moving, doing a lot of different things, kids are asking her a thousand different questions and I don't know how she does it, but she balances it all out and makes it all work, some people would walk in and probably have a heart attack or a stroke, but she walks in and she handles it well and manages it well and kids are used to it and, and they thrive in there.
I think she's awesome because she's really nice to everyone, like even though she might get a little frustrated, it's still, it's still like she's not mad at you.
Just like a really kind teacher and she understands from the standpoint about like why they're struggling or why they're frustrated.
She tries to make all of her classes fun, like she tries to entertain the kids as she's teaching, she tells stories that relates to what we're doing, about her life and it makes them more interesting for the students to listen to. She goes down and sits with them, explains every problem and like if they still don't get it, she like takes like their perspective of it and she changes it around to where they'll understand.
He's always supportive to everyone.
One of the main things I like to say is she's got a big voice. At the end of the day, it cracks me up when they're doing bus together, the kids on the bus, it's, "Let's go, let's go, get up," you know, to make sure that the bus drivers don't have to sit and wait for the dilly-dallyers to get down the hall.
She's very hardworking, she's very student-centered, she's very flexible and the fact that she's willing to do anything and everything you ask her to do.
She is a kind and, you know, helpful person, we share the same prep time, so every time I, you know, need help or just need to kind of talk about things and bounce ideas off of someone else, she's always more than willing to help me out in that respect.
She also has somewhat of a support system, you know, we cheer each other on when, when things get rough around the edges at school.
She will go over and above to do things for the students, she takes the extra time with them before school, after school, during lunch.
She holds the kids to a high standard and, you know, I think that's important that they see that.
She is my co-sponsor for Scholastic Bowl this year too, since we took this, this club over from Mr. DeHolder, I was very nervous going into it, but she was, you know, more than happy to help me out in that regard.
Just in general, as a, I consider her a young professional, you know, that we need that in our, in our school system, you know, we need the strong, the strong leader type teachers and I think she fits that bill.
With the experience that she's had from being in different districts, I think it's been a really good thing to bring here to Sherrod because she's gotten a lot of experience in, you know, teaching students of different diversities and backgrounds and all of these things and I think that it helps to understand where each and every student is coming from.
She's really good at math and the kids have to go to her for math help, no matter who they have as a teacher, they always like to revert to her for math, so love you for that.
For her friends, her daughters, you know, they'll take care of the old dance, you know, make sure he knows what he's doing and she certainly comes to my rescue technologically, you know, that's a big part. Should we go get Miss Wolshel, that's common refrain from my students, yeah, go get her.
She also jumps in on the student dress-up days, it's really fun, she did on twin day, she and her daughter who's in junior high with her now, dressed up together, I just loved that.
It feels like one big thing here, you know, like I don't feel like I am gonna be judged if I have to ask a question or bounce an idea off of someone else, like I feel like we all work really well together and we, we listen without judgment, as the kids would say, you know, it's one of those things that makes even the hard days worth it.
We would be for or without her, I'll just put it that way.
I think Mrs. Wolshel is the most splendorific, most beautiful person ever.
I think she's got a bright future out of her, you know, working with all the different types of kids she does and we're really excited to keep her around and have her part of our family for a long time.
And there's always the best part is the look of surprise on their face when you see that, so.
I rushed out of Scholastic, I'm like, "I got 100%, I'm gonna be late."
So we have to know what was the excuse that lured you here?
To talk about MTSS and what we have been doing so far at the junior high level.
Awesome, did you bring a PowerPoint?
I asked him if I could make one and he said, "You just give me a piece of paper and he goes, 'You're fine, just go off of this.'" I should've known when I didn't have to make PowerPoint.
Dad's here too.
So a great thing about Rachel, and I can speak from experience, is when you, when you walk by her classroom, it is a, it's an active loud learning environment, which I love to see, kids have a little bit of an outlet, there's just one last thing that they have to worry, they're not sitting quietly in rows, they're actively learning and one thing that I've seen several times with my own eyes and Rachel's after my own heart with this, is it's never, "Hey, good job," you know, okay, it's, you know, "Hey, good job, now what?" and she's always building, she's always spiraling upwards, so that's something that's great to see from an administrative standpoint, as you're always, you know, congratulating the kids, cheering them on, but, "Let's keep it going, okay, you're doing a nice job, let's get it even higher." So, on behalf of the Board of Education and Administration and your family and coworkers who are also here to surprise you, we would like to present you with the limited edition Tiger Talent Golden Apple that you can bring in the hallway.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do, we appreciate it and we're very happy you're here.
I think I'll feed my children, so.
Okay, so we shall switch back to the good news report.
Hello Sherrod, welcome to this month's good news report.
We've got a lot to tell the grades, so let's get started.
We have our spelling bee finalists, each elementary and middle school held their competitions in January and now these top spellers will head to the regional finals on the standard on March 1st.
Congratulations to Sherrod grades Collins Custer, Winola Elementary's Kennedy Meyer, and Matherville Intermediate's Claire Herger, good luck to all of our finalists.
Also a huge shout-out to the Tigers Robotics Team, they visited Winola and Sherrod Elementarys showcasing their robotic creations and sparking interest in STEM learning throughout our district and bringing the smells to all.
The National Honor Society helped kick off quarter three in a big way, at the Q3 kickoff assembly, NHS members performed a skit and encouraged students to participate in the ongoing food in Heijing Drive for the Sherrod Food Pantry, and guest who made a special appearance, our very own top tiger, Olympian Dan Steele, also joined in on the fun, he spoke with fourth graders in Mrs. Kelly's class, sharing his experiences at the Olympic Games and encouraging students to focus on their education to achieve their dreams.
And speaking of goals, Sherrod grades PTO wrapped up their T-shirt fundraiser to support playground improvements, over 120 shirts were sold and final totals will be reported at the next month's Board of Education meeting, thanking to everyone who participated.
Love was in the air at Winola Elementary, thanks to the PTO, students had a blast making and delivering kindergarten to celebrate Valentine's Day.
And the Kids' Heart Challenge is officially underway, this fundraising event for the American Heart Association will run through February 28th, reveal the total amount raised and celebrate on March 5th, so stay tuned. Early February, four fifth graders and four sixth graders represented Matherville Intermediate in the Elementary State Choir at the Illinois Music Educators Conference in Peoria at the Civic Center.
Fifth graders include Lincoln Brown, Sadie Lyons, Shelby Shivers, and Sophie Serrata. Sixth graders include Eva Cornell, Matthew Dyer, Skylar Schumek, and Kayden Smith.
The seventh grade boys' basketball team wrapped up their season with an incredible record and secured the Prairieland Conference Travel banner.
The eighth grade boys' basketball team had a strong postseason run, making it to the IESA 3A Regional Championship, they took down second seed Orion and third seed Rockridge before falling in the final, a special shout-out to Wilmington Block who received the sportsmanship award.
And we have a state championship to celebrate, the Sherrod Junior High Horse Judging Team took the first place in state.
That's right, the team of Colby Parrish, Madeline Burbidge, Caleb Thompson, and Wayne Webber won by 15-point margin, individually, Colby Parrish placed third and Madeline Burbidge placed fourth, way to go.
Both junior high volleyball teams are off to a strong start too, the eighth grade team is sitting at six and one and the seventh grade team at five and two, keep it up Tigers. In music news, both our high school and junior high All-State Choir Qualifiers walked the halls to the cheer of their peers before performing February 1st at the Peoria Civic Center.
The girls varsity basketball team are the track west champions.
And another big event is coming up, the National Honor Society induction ceremony will be held on February 26th at the Camden Center.
Sherrod's high school drama students made their mark at the Illinois High School Theater Fest at the University of Illinois, 10 students attended this prestigious event, which brings thousands of high school thespians together to perform, attend workshops, and learn from professionals, this was Sherrod's second year attending. Our FFA team had a great showing at state, taking sixth place in horse judging oral reasoning and 12th place in horse judging, non-musical.
And last week, we celebrated Counselors Week, a blated but very special thank you to Stacy Blackwell and Julie Drish for all they do for us students. That's Sherrod for this month's good news report, I'm Kimmy Swanson.
And I'm Mackenzie Cameron, thanks for tuning in and remember, stay positive Sherrod.
I think that's it?
Okay.
I'm gonna stand my hair. I'm Kimmy Swanson. I'm Kimmy Swanson.
Once the giggle starts, all over.
Back.
Back well. NHS members put our face skin.
Yay!
It's like taking a wild record. Three days worth. Three days would take them to get all that money.
Tim, could you confirm that the NHS induction ceremony's actually been moved to the 24th, was I correct?
Yes, Monday, the 24th, yes.
All right, that was awesome how the kids.
I know.
All right. Agenda item five, to approve the consent agenda as presented. A motion was made by Mrs. Lyon, seconded by Mr. Dominic, to approve the consent agenda items as presented, Mrs. Lyon?
Yes.
Mr. Dominic?
Yes.
Mr. Caver?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBlak?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, good evening again, everyone, first item that I have for the report of the superintendent is our calendar for FY27, which is two years, not next year, but the year after, in your packet we included draft A and draft B, just roughly off the top here, the two differences that we have, draft A is what I would consider more traditional date-wise for what we have done recently, that would be the teachers here August 3rd and 4th, and then the kids starting on Wednesday, the 5th of August, draft B moves that back a little bit and we would have teachers here on Thursday and Friday, the 6th and 7th of August, and then the kids would start on August 10th. Let's see, there is a little bit of an imbalance, I mean, it's relatively close, but essentially the biggest difference that you would see is first quarter on the traditional, how we have been doing it, would be 40 days and it would be 37 days on the adapt, how should we say, adapted one, which is draft B, so just three days difference there.
First quarter?
It says four to three days.
Uh, first quarter, excuse me.
It says four to three days.
Forty-three for first quarter, forty-one for second.
They looked so down in pretty even.
Did those go to the lower end here in third?
No, 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 I'm sorry, I'm reading, I'm reading off the wrong column, my apology, Becky fixed my chicken scratch, yeah, down in the bottom, okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, forty-three would get bigger, I was looking at where I had my notes, but I'm not used to dealing with the refinements that you guys get to see after Becky cleanses it up, so.
I'm sure there was a. Days over to the side are.
Yeah, down in the bottom left, I'm sorry, is what you want to look at. Oh, gotcha, okay.
That's how I separate first semester from second semester, so.
So B seems a little bit more balanced.
Testing will be, what, April, I guess testing?
That's what we anticipate, yeah.
So that'll be fourth quarter, right?
Yeah.
They both seem balanced as far as the time between the days in the classroom before breaks, as far as like there's eight weeks before fall break on both, it just shifted back, ended up on the start date, and then same with fall and Christmas break as well.
And good job keeping two clean weeks at, at winter, I'm sorry, that's been.
Yeah, April's, either way, yeah, so, the big, and I'd say there's, again, the one, the couple outliers is we start later, you know, the kids are essentially home for another week, and then what I refer to as Easter Monday, or the Monday after Easter would be an attendance day on draft B, option B, still Good Friday, the 26th of March off, but we'd be back in session. And I think the biggest piece, yeah, the biggest piece of that is just communication, making sure that, even though we've taken it off the last couple or few years, making sure that everybody, staff and students know that that's an attendance day, so don't take an exception. Easter Monday, March 29th.
Yeah, because on A, it's got 26th and 29th off.
Are the spring days different?
Just by, it just shifts back, or.
So the old one has an earlier spring, right?
Is this a six, one half dozen the other, or preference by staff, or any input that way, or?
After the last contract negotiations, there's no more calendar committee and I, it's honestly close enough that I don't know.
No big area contention, no landmine there, nothing like that?
Looking back through the, the notes from the last three years for the committee, it was basically the most important pieces were to kind of keep parent-teacher or student-led conferences where they were in terms of relationship to a break, and then the two clean weeks off at, between semesters, so it's.
Does both of those do that, right?
Yeah, so, and as a former high school teacher, my biggest concern was is the balancing of the semesters, and we really don't have the quarter concerns, when I was a principal, it was, driver said it was a quarter class, so anytime there was more than one or two snow days or something like that, you had to start to panic because you had to have that seat time, but it's a semester class, so there's not that concern, so.
And your snow days are still at the end of the year.
Yep.
I can only find two days difference, but I know that, that moved back three days, what's the third day? Columbus Day, Easter Monday, where did the third day go?
Look at the October break, it's one day shorter.
October break's one day shorter.
October 2nd.
Yeah, everything's the same, and she's, Columbus Day is, Columbus Day is incorporated in October break as opposed to being an extra.
I found that one, and then you said Easter Monday, so where's the third day come from, I can't find it.
Of course I don't have my copy with my notes.
It is in March.
Two days in November on both of them.
It's in March somewhere.
Isn't that Easter Monday?
Yeah, it's Easter Monday.
Oh, that's Monday after.
Oh, they go one extra day on B.
So is it supposed to ending on the 20th?
Got it, yeah, you're right.
Which is still, because of how it's structured.
It ends a week.
Yeah, it still ends a week before. Like the, or before the world day, so you, you just have four.
Yeah.
You just have a full day.
Five emergency days, yeah.
Graduation on the 14th, or, I mean, so that weekend.
With B, the last emergency, the last three emergencies is pushed into June, whereas A, we've only got two that are into June.
We're not gonna use any this year, in 27.
Really?
It's gonna be Carl growing over here.
You're probably really tired of the 4-3 conference calls.
Yeah, the National Weather Service guys need more pleasant voices to get me on bed at that time, so.
Is there any more questions? So since we have two options to present them or to approve as presented, we just need to?
Make a motion to.
Make a motion to approve one or the other.
Yeah, and I mean, it's, you guys can say what you like or don't like and.
So I guess the question I have, Ken, is, state fair, will the layers start allowing you guys to, or the people to go down there?
I believe so, I mean.
It'll help.
It will help, yes, I mean, honestly, any kid that goes down there for real purposes, is gonna go regardless, it is excused if it's an FFA or 4H event, I just do like that it gives some whole extra week back into summer since our summers are really just two months anymore, um, yeah.
When's new winter?
That's what I was gonna ask, my rodeo.
We always wait to put that on, it's traditionally would be like the 13th, 14th.
Okay.
On August, yeah, but I always wait till a little closer to put that on there so there's still, if you don't have to change it. First week of school as opposed to the second one, usually Ms. Weber knows when I'm called.
Right, yeah, I mean, so I definitely support B because of the extra week thing in summer, the benefits, the kids that are gonna go down, that's great, but again. Yeah. Can I make a motion?
Thank you.
What is this E?
E is A.
What are you looking at?
E12, that's early out, isn't it?
Yeah, being early out, but we wouldn't do that on draft B because that's the first week of school.
Okay, that's one likewise.
Trying not to. Trying to get them back in the habit without an early out. On D, that's one other thing.
Yeah, on D, they come back to start pulling.
Do they not have any early outs that have August?
Either in A or B.
And they do in A.
Well, I guess in, in A they have.
Okay.
So, yeah.
So you'll put that in. There's just not a continued at that day.
Yeah, next, yeah, when it's a year out, I'll make sure that the, I'll talk to the rodeo committee.
Okay. Right, this really far for that, right? All right, so I would make a motion to approve draft B for the calendar, 20, 26, 27 calendar. A motion was made by Mrs. DeBlak and seconded by Mr. Helm to approve calendar B for the 26, 27 school year, Mrs. DeBlak?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Caver?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mr. Dominic?
Yes.
Mrs. Lyon?
Yep.
Calendar B is approved, motion carried. Now that was a lot of hours crying, getting everything out, so thank you.
Becky should be the hero because she deciphered mine.
I wanna see the drafts.
I have a calendar question though, why is Sunday never listed on this schedule?
It's never been, they never.
Because it's literally just a copy of the state form and I, you know how many times I've started to add?
Who print this off, and they like, it's an article, it burns down on the bulletin board, and then whenever I look at it to like do the dry erase board calendar for the month, it throws me off every single time because Sunday is not the day after the sixth.
And especially when you start talking about things like Easter Monday.
Right.
Or graduation. I know.
Or blank box, so they write them themselves?
I did just approve the amended calendar for their snow day and it's, it's the same thing. Really has to look at it because it's the Sunday column.
I would like it a little bit easier, I don't like it.
I'll send a note to State Superintendent Sanders.
The column is there, yeah.
All right, second item we have is permission to seek bus bids, I would like to continue the practice that my predecessor, Mr. Voucher, started, which has been an excellent plan of purchasing two new, 77er big buses, 77 passenger big buses each year and then rotating two old ones out of the fleet, Joe does a nice job of making sure that we get rid of the least serviceable models, so we would like to continue that, I'm quite nervous to see what the bids will come back this year, they were quite a bit higher last year, but I think it would probably be wise to duplicate everything we've done in the last few years with the two caveats, I would put, we reserve the right to purchase one, or we reserve the right to reject all bids based on the sum that actually comes in, that is just for fail-safe for the district because if we're used to paying, you know, 130, or 100, expecting 130, $140,000 and they come back substantially higher, we might need to have another conversation, because we have gotten in line with budgeting a certain amount of money, I see Lindsay back there smiling, she wants to high-five me right now, but I just think that it would be a good idea to put that language in there, I'm gonna guess that the folks who are gonna open the bus bids probably expect that, so.
What, what, you say the rotation every couple of years, replacing, how long do they do to stay in service?
They are gonna stay in service short of, mathematically, about eight years.
And you have any idea how many powers or miles are on them at this point, Phil, if we're gonna get rid of them?
Do not, I do not, I know Joe always keeps two spares, minimum of two spares, I think we have three sitting out there right now, because if they're, in Joe's opinion, if they're serviceable and still reliable, he'll keep three, if not, we'll keep two for spares. And he'll, if, if there's one that's been problematic, it might not be the oldest, but it'll get rotated out.
And then I guess another question, I think I've asked this before, I need to remind me, like, we don't, we can't get involved in these, and there's reasons, I think we don't want to, any sort of like state bid or anything like that on vehicles. Like, like county can hit a state bid price on like a plow truck.
And we can too, but.
But there's features that we, generally, you don't have anything to say about what they're featured with, or how they come, or anything, is like.
Yeah, we have, we have a pretty heavy spec list, so all of our engines.
Is that why we don't do that primarily, or?
Yeah.
If they can just throw whatever they want on it, or leave off?
Everybody's forced to go with what the state adopts. For, like, the last two pickups we bought, we did not do the state bid process through it, because Kunis Ford had what we needed at a comparable price without the restrictions. And going with the state bid essentially just eliminates the need to do the, this.
Have we ever talked to other local, other school districts to see if maybe we go in to get a quantity discount? So we talk with Oriana, Rock Ridge, or a couple of other schools and say, hey, are you guys looking just to, have we ever looked at doing that? Would that be beneficial?
I'm not, usually, because we have, I'm gonna brag, we've got the best bus fleet around. Like, up until last year, they kind of made fun of us, because we're the only ones with air conditioning.
Well, we have the worst rates as well.
But that, yeah, I can, I can talk to them and see what they're thinking.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, it's just.
Not everybody's.
In my mind, if, if they're comparable, I'd just get a, you know. I remember also, the purchase of the buses, it doesn't necessarily, it's not in that with the, like, eighty percent of our buses, bus, bus scene, transportation costs are reimbursed. But the purchase of the buses isn't necessarily, right?
How many, what's our fleet, how big's our fleet?
Usually, we're running about eighteen. Jeff, help me. Lately here, with special education routes, it's become significantly more complex. Don't break out in hives on me, Jeff, but it's, yeah, a challenge.
Can you sell the?
Yeah, we either sell them or trade them, depending, I actually used a little bit more leverage, and we got a thousand dollars apiece more this last time than we did previously, because we had some local folks who were looking at them.
Maybe when you bring the bids back, if you have like a list with the years and how many miles are on all our buses, and start so we can kind of see what we got.
I can get that, yeah, I can.
Alright, so. I have a motion to grant. No, I'm on the next one, sorry.
Yeah.
Well, I tried to, no, I'm sorry. Permission, Dr. Johnson, to seek bids for two new seventy-seven passenger buses airing.
So moved.
Reese's in here, everybody bosses me around.
That's my boss in here.
A motion was made by Mr. Dominick, seconded by Mrs. Lyons, for permission for Dr. Johnson to seek bids for two seventy-seven passenger buses. Mr. Dominick?
Yes.
Mrs. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Caver?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBlach?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Alright, and my final item I have tonight is the strategic plan update. So we opened the survey, survey's been open for a couple of weeks now. There was a staff survey, and there was a public survey, and honestly, they were the exact same survey, they just went to two different URLs, and people had the opportunity to answer those questions and provide some input on what they would like to see. I was not, to be blunt, I was not blown away by the feedback. We had twenty-three people complete the public survey, and we had thirty staff members complete the survey. So, I was hoping for about ten times that amount on each of them, but sifting through what people have written, we have some pretty thoughtful things in there, there was very, very little negativity in there, which was very nice to see. We seem to have plenty of volunteers. So, the next steps are the invitations to be a part of an individual committee. We'll go out next week, possibly Friday. We will have meetings to be started before spring break, so we're gonna try to have all of our initial meetings before spring break. And again, that was Casey is, what, Casey's student achievement. Tim is Twenty-first Century Workforce, Jeff is a trained in agile workforce, Brady is transformation, I am the infrastructure and sustainability person, and Carrie is tell the charade story. But I will keep everybody updated with those, so we hope to have our first meetings before spring break. The goal is to have two meetings per initiative, and then the administrators and I will compile what we have, bring that back to the board if we have enough time, we'll do that in April, otherwise, it'll be at the May meeting, and then I would recommend having a possible board retreat after that to compile things and, and literally get our plan in place for what we wanna see. That was a lot of information download, what questions do you have? Awesome, everybody's just excited to get going, right? It was kind of fascinating reading through some of the answers, it was, it was good, I was, I was pretty happy overall. I mean, like I said, I would have liked ten times that amount of input, but I think what we got was pretty good.
Thanks, I'll probably do it thirty times if I want to.
You've got different answers every time.
D helm one, a Gmail, D helm two, a Gmail.
If you were to have a couple, like, tablets outside at pickup time from the grade schools that were to be passed around, you could get probably a whole lot of more participation.
Flu? No, just.
No, like, so like at drive, for example, you park your car at three-thirty, fourth grade doesn't get out until about three-forty-five, three-fifty-ish, and there's probably between forty-ish or more parents standing up all the time, playground to the car out at four o'clock.
Kayla did a nice job with the QR code flyers. Maybe we can, so people wanna sit.
But have like, yeah, have like a tablet, pass it around.
Yeah, 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 so, alright, awesome. And that is all I have for the superintendent's report tonight.
I did not have any requests this week for communications, is there any ideas for, oh, that is you.
That's me.
Not mine, that's you.
Alright, so we had Boss Ed last night, they hired a new principal for the center, Jennifer Fordice? And so, yay, I got a new principal, so now they have to replace, she was the assistant principal there, correct? And so, hired her up. It was kind of interesting, they presented us with this chart kind of of their current enrollment, and that, and showing us kind of their waitlist and stuff, so, for all the districts that feed into them, but she just wanted to make it sure, you know. They're, they're, they're doing surveys, they're gathering information to try to improve, I guess is what they'd say. You know, they've got a waitlist to get into Boss Ed, but of course, before they can just put a kid in a classroom, they gotta see if they blend in with the current kids that are there. But basically, the survey that went out to all the districts is asking for some input, you know, what, what do we need at district, SEO? I guess it, it went to all teachers, and that was the first two, and as it, should have. But it was a first, honestly, and I was the first time that I've ever seen it given to me as a general and teacher. Normally, I think it all went to special ed, they thought, in the past, for that. But I did ask that next time that survey goes out to all the staff, could we have some clarification? Because I didn't know what half these questions meant on the survey. But the reason they're doing it is gather information, do we need to look at building? Do we need to look at, you know, having additional classrooms because the clientele is growing so large at Boss Ed? So, she went over things like that, and then I told them I was gonna share the one kind of comical thing. I guess they had a very unusual smell in one of their conference rooms, I should tell you this. And that, and come to find out that, I guess when they, they put in the new unit on top of the roof, they forgot to extend the sewer pipe.
Oh.
Next to it, and so the gas that was coming out of the sewer piping was coming right into conference room.
Guess that's one way to keep conferences open.
Say yes.
Closing the bathroom door, installing the toilet, and then realizing you can't get out.
It still seals in here.
Alright.
But I mean, I continue to put on Kathy, just her job cleaning up and really getting some things going at Boss Ed that we haven't seen in a while.
She's very thorough.
Yes.
Very approachable, very hands-on, does a good job.
Yes.
Really impressed.
Oh, and because of some of these possible changes coming down, and the great demand, there could be some changes in tuition costs coming down too, which means more cost to us.
And our district does a, I like to say, we, we do our part in hosting the programs with the deaf and hard of hearing program. We're very proud of what the charade folks do, and, and welcome everybody in, all the Boss Ed staff and the kids from a variety of areas for the deaf and hard of hearing program, and that's just one of those. Not trying to sound altruistic, but I know Alan felt the same way, this is kind of our way to give back. You know, not all of the outlying schools are hosting a program like we are, and I think that that really, that helps for the greater good.
Yes. Oh, and one other thing, I did ask the question, with all these changes coming down from our new, our new president, concerns with money going into Boss Ed, and, but basically, Boss Ed is not relying on federal funds. They rely on basically us to pay them.
They rely on us to get federal funds.
They rely on our federal funds, so should funding be cut, they are still self-reliant? As long as they can pay them.
As long as we can pay them.
As long as we get our money, then they'll get their money. So, yeah, so it's scary. What have you done now? Okay, that's it. I was the president last week, so, nice.
They give you a gavel.
Seriously, gotta go. Yeah, I'm bringing one.
Okay. Seven point oh-two, future agenda items, anyone have anything they would like to add or future agenda items, besides the gavel? Alright, there's nothing there. I will take a motion to go into closed session according to five ILC, out of section one-twenty, C one through twelve, and section six through twenty-one. Sixteen through twenty-one.
Jump on.
A motion was made by Mrs. Lyons, seconded by Mr. Dominick, to go on your phone session. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you all.